Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay with the Lord and Morse Premium, I'm Tay Callarott. The acronym is AMPAC and the Chief Judge of Counsel of Court. Uh, today is Class 54, Class 54. What do we learn in Class 53? Well, we started learning about the Act Algeciras of 1906 in real time, right? So in the past, uh, about 52 classes, we always refer to the Act Algeciras, but now we're reading it in real time, right? The actual treaty itself. So Moors have to keep in mind, this is one of the most powerful treaties ever written on behalf of Moors. So keep in mind, the Act Algeciras of 1906 is a Moors treaty. If you have time, go back and count how many times they listed the word "Moors." They listed 43 times, right? That tells you right then and there, who are the parties? Moors and foreigners. That's it, right? What else are we learning about this thus far? Well, when you start reading the Act Algeciras of 1906, one of the first things we started looking at is that the United States and the United States of America was following what's called customary law, right? International law. What were they doing? Right off the top, we learned about ratification, depository and promulgation. That's what you call peremptory norms of international law. Why is it peremptory? Because you have no choice but to do it. You cannot claim to be a state without checking the applicable boxes, okay? So what we're learning right off the top, the United States and the United States of America was following instructions. What instructions? Instructions of international law, but where did international law come from? It came from Moors culture, right? Native Moors culture, sometime referred to as the Mohammedan law or the Sharifian law, right? Which is really just more like Kenanite law, right? We're talking about thousands and thousands and thousands of years old, right? We're talking about going back and scribing into the side of a rock. We're talking about pyramids, that's how far these type of treaties and international law goes back, right? So what's happening right now? There's nothing new under the sun, right? So Moors, right now, what are we doing? This is what you call same frame, different picture. The Moors of the 21st century aren't doing anything but being a new picture, but we're the same frame of our ancient mothers and fathers. We're repeating customary law in terms of what they did. They enacted laws and they, they live by those laws. You can go back and look at the Iroquois Confederation, right? They had their own treaty, they came together as a confederation of multiple tribes coming together under one government, right? And that government was ruled by who? Women, matriarchs, right? So we're, we're now trying to get back into matriarchal principles. The world has been ran by patriarchs. We gotta get back to the matriarchs so they can control the people, right? What does that mean? That we get back to equality, both mothers and sons working side by side, right? That's what you call the triple principle. That's mother, father, son, triple principle, right? So, as we keep reading the Act Algeciras of 1906, one of the other themes that we learned in, in the class, we started looking at what's called the International Court of Justice, the ICJ statutes, right? Article 39 talked about what? Whenever you're dealing with international law, you're dealing with now the community of other states. There's only two acceptable languages, and what are those languages? French and English, that's it. What type of French? Standardized French. What type of English? Standardized English. And how do they write? They write in black and white, they write in standardized English, right? Proper nouns, et cetera, right? Just proper grammar. Moors have to learn how to keep it simple, alright? So therefore, we have to now petition ICJ to deal with a belligerent United States of America or the United States as an international organization, how would you send your documents to them? It would have to be in French or standardized English. And if you try to send them anything other than that, what are they gonna tell you to do? Can you please translate it and send it to us in a proper form according to Article 39 of the International Court of Justice statutes? That's what we gotta learn, Moors. It's all about following the instructions, i.e. following the procedures, alright? So, okay, let's go ahead and get into the class. As you see, AMPAC has its constitution up, it's all about constitution, Moors. It's the emanating document, it's the paramount document, right? So what we have to understand is, Moors, is without the constitution, there is nothing. You end up simply being stateless, right? So we're gonna talk about that a lot more today, now that we've talked about the Act Algeciras. We've got through the preamble, the preamble is one of the most important, uh, phrases ever written in history, right? It starts to now come together with the customary law, trying to keep things simple based upon three perspectives. That sovereignty and independence, interior domains and economic liberty without any inequality, right? We're keeping it simple. You see how simple that is, Moors? Those are called principles, right? These are just basic procedures. That's what Moors have to understand. Keep it simple, alright? Okay, let's go ahead and get into the class, today's Class 54. Okay, so in Class 53, we took our time and started understanding the triple principle in real time. We've talked about the triple principle quite often, but now we're reading in real time. We left off on understanding the specific contents of the Act Algeciras, right? We got 123 articles, but it has seven chapters. We started reading all the chapters, right? So what we're gonna do, we're gonna pick up where we left off, we're gonna start with, uh, the preamble section, okay? So the preamble section in the document, where we'll start. Okay, there's an overlap, it's very important for Moors to understand. The preamble, alright? Okay, well, let's go ahead and start where we left off in Class 53.
Who furnished with full powers which were found in good and due form have in conformity with the program upon which His Sharifian Majesty and the powers have agreed successively discussed and adopted. One, a declaration relative to the organization of the police. Two, a regulation concerning the detection and repression of the contraband of arms. Three, an act of concession for a Moroccan state bank. Four, a declaration concerning a better return of taxes and the creation of new revenues. Five, a regulation concerning the customs of the empire and the repression of fraud and smuggling. Six, a declaration relative to public services and public works and having decided that these different documents might usefully be coordinated in a single instrument. They have united them in a general act composed of the following articles.
Alright, thank you. Okay, so now, we're going to get into Chapter 1, right? So we went over the contents. The contents itself was the triple principle, right? First, it started talking about the contents, it started securing statehood by now introducing all the parties. Then immediately, it started talking about, in Chapter 1, was securing the police. Started talking about securing arms, right? Right after that, it went right into what's called economic liberty, right? So it's the triple principle, that's what Moors have to understand. You always have to start with box number one, sovereignty and independence, then box number two, interior domains, then last but not least, you get into prosperity of economic liberty. This is what Moors have to understand. Where have we been making our mistakes all this time? We've been jumping straight to box number two, trying to maintain interior domains, but yet we skipped over what? Sovereignty and independence, which is the what? Emanating document, right? The paramount document was the Constitution, ratification, depository and promulgation. So now that we're now, um, checking the boxes, we're now following instructions, now we can start understanding what the Act of Algeciras is really all about, okay? Now, keep in mind, as AMPAC is reading the Act Algeciras, we're going to take our time. This is 123 articles, but it makes no difference for us just to read all 123 without really comprehending what we're reading, right? So as Moors already know, over the last, I don't know, several decades, Moors haven't been talking about the Act Algeciras, we really wasn't taught about it. So it's advantageous for all of us to take the time to truly comprehend, you discern and forensics, to really understand what is this treaty all about? And I can tell you right now, this treaty is 75% of it is about commerce. 75% of it. But the only way for you to protect the, the commerce, i.e. the prosperity, you must have interior domain and a state, alright? Alright, so let's go ahead and get into it, Chapter 1. Um, so what we're going to do, Moors, just to let you know, uh, I'm gonna have a mother go ahead and read the articles, okay? Then we'll go back and use discernment. So I want a nice clean read, then we'll go back and use discernment, alright? That way it's not too choppy, okay? So let's go ahead and get into it, okay, Moors, Chapter 1.
Declaration relative to the organization of the police. Article 1. The conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measures necessary to organize the police declares that the following provisions should be made. Article 2. The police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the Magin from Moors Mohammedans commanded by Moors Khais and distributed in the eight ports open to commerce. Article 3. In order to aid the Sultan in the organization of this police, Spanish officers and non-commissioned officers as instructors and French officers and non-commissioned officers as instructors shall be placed at his disposal by their respective governments which shall submit their designation to the approval of His Sharifian Majesty. A contract drawn between the Magin and these instructors in conformity to the regulation provided by Article 4 shall determine the conditions of their engagement and fix their pay, which must not be less than double of the pay corresponding to the rank of each officer or non-commissioned officer. In addition, they will be allowed living expenses varying according to their residences. Proper lodgings will be placed at their disposal by the Magin, Magin, which will likewise supply them with their horses and the necessary fodder. The governments having jurisdiction over the instructors reserve the right to recall them and replace them by others excepted and engaged under the same conditions. Article 4. These officers and non-commissioned officers for a period of five years to date from the ratification of the Act of the Conference shall give their service to the organization of a body of Sharifian police. They shall assure instruction and discipline in conformity with the regulations to be drawn up in respect thereto. They shall also see that the men enlisted are fit for military service. In a general way, they shall supervise the administration of the soldiers and superintend the payment of their salary, which shall be affected by the Amin assisted by the accounting officer instructor. They shall extend to the Moors authorities invested with the command of these bodies their technical aid in the exercise of the said command. The regulations to assure their recrutal, discipline, instruction and administration of the bodies of police shall be established by mutual agreement between the Sharifian Minister of War or his delegate, the inspector, provided by Article 7, and the highest ranking French and Spanish instructors. The regulations shall be submitted to the diplomatic body at Tangier which will formulate its opinion within a month's time. After that period, the regulations shall be enforced. Article 5. The total strength of the police shall not be more than 2,500 men nor less than 2,000. It shall be distributed according to the importance of the ports in groups varying between 150 and 600 men. The number of Spanish and French officers shall be between 16 and 20 of French and Spanish non-commissioned officers between 30 and 40. Article 6. The funds necessary to maintain and pay soldiers and officers and non-commissioned officer instructors shall be advanced by the state bank to the Sharifian treasury within the limits of the annual budget assigned to the police. We shall not exceed 2 million and a half pesetas for an effective strength of 2,500 men.
Okay. So we got about 12 articles in Chapter 1, but we're gonna pause right here, right? We'll go back and reflect thus far what we've read, okay? It's very important to understand, alright? So, let's go back to, to the beginning, we're gonna go back to Article 1. And we'll pick back up at, uh, Article 7. Okay, so, Chapter 1, alright? It's a very important chapter, all the chapters are important, don't get me wrong, but what you have to understand is, in any contract, it sets up the parties. It also starts to now let you know who has the authority in this contract. Keep in mind, all treaties are contracts. So immediately, in any contract, it immediately lets you know who has the sovereign authority, right? Who has the most shares in this contract? Who gets to tell who what to do, right? That's what it sets up immediately in Chapter 1, alright? Okay, so first thing is, declaration relative to the organization of the police, right? Now, most people read that title and they just keep on reading, but what we have to use, we have to use discernment. We have to take the time to break these things down, Moors. This is a treaty. Moors must understand it, there's nothing higher in terms of authority than treaties. So if you don't understand your own treaty, then that means what? More than likely, either you're gonna make a mistake or you don't know how to enforce your own law, which is going to make you incompetent. So let's go ahead and start understanding exactly what's the, what is a declaration relative to organization of the police? Why does the Sultan wanna start right here? Because he's maintaining what? Interior domains, he knows the police and judges work side by side, right? That's the first thing in any law. Police and judges, right? It's also your legislation, because your police and your judges are working off of what? The law of the state, right? So he goes right into police. But let's, let's get an understanding of what's happening here. Okay, so right here, Moors, the definition of nation. The definition of nation gives a lot of insight to Moors. The Moors have been studying the Blackfall Dictionary, 3rd and 4th edition, as they, they would tell you. But have we really been studying, understanding what does nation mean? We talked about the word nation, but now we're really starting to get a perfect understanding of what is nation all about? Nation is about what? Nation, a people, or aggregation of men existing in the form of an organized juror society, usually inhabiting a distinct portion of the earth. So they're talking about state, right? But what's most important here? Organized juror society, you'll hear me talk about that quite often. Why is that? Okay, let's go back to the treaty. Chapter 1 is about what? Declaration relative to the organization of the people, of the police. So you're talking about organizing something, right? Remember the preamble is about what? Reigning in the order, right? So we have to become organized, right? An organized juror society, so let's go back and take a look at it. Definition of nation. So now that we're looking at this word, organized juror society, they're trying to tell us something. What's happening? This is 4th Edition Blackfall Dictionary, let's look up the definition of juror. It's going to tell you something, it's going to disclose something, right? But it's gonna wait till the last sentence to really expose it, but it's gonna give you a brief before it leads up to the specific theme that you need to know, okay? So, mother, definition of juror, 4th edition.
One, pertaining to natural or positive right or to the doctrines of rights and obligations as juror relations.
Okay, stop right there. What are we reading here? It's giving you instructions. What are the instructions? Pertaining to natural or positive right or to the doctrines of rights and obligations. Moors must understand, we have obligations. If we want our rights, then we have to maintain the obligations and those obligations come from what? Pertaining to natural or positive right. Well, what's the natural or positive right? That's jurisprudence, right? That's your concept, wouldn't it? That's following law, law of what? Your ancient mothers and fathers, okay? But what are doctrines? Doctors are documents, right? Talking about the reforms, the forms, the applications. The applications set up your rights, because the rights are in writing and those are your obligations to understand how do you enforce your rights. It starts with a pin, through an application. Then it lets you know, that creates the juror relations. What is the relations? Now you're relating to what's called customary international law. The entire world works off the obligations and rights. Even though they use this word doctrines, but the doctrines mean what? Reforms, applications, mechanisms, right? The arrangements of proper written instruments. Proper written instruments, which is the constitution and all your legislation, et cetera, right? We're talking about the proper written instruments, right? Okay, so let's continue on, so we're talking about what? Obligations and rights. If you wanna be organized, you must understand what are your obligations in order to be organized? Okay, let's continue. Number 2.
Of or pertaining to jurisprudence, juristic, juridical.
Okay, okay, Moors.
3. Recognized or sanctioned by positive law embraced within or covered by the rules and enactments of positive law.
Stop right there, it's number 3, it's telling you what? These obligations are sanctioned. What's a sanction? It must be done, it's an order. It's a final judgment, it's adjudication, right? It is the final sentencing. Anytime you're dealing with a adjudication, you're being sentenced, right? The sentence from the judge is utilizing what? Sentences, which are the words, right? The words are now giving you, set forth what? The sanctions, right? It's an order. So it's recognized or sanctioned by positive law. What's positive law? Common law, jurisprudence, mother's law, nature's law, right? Embraced with or covered by the rules, Moors, rules, and enactments of positive law. We have to follow the positive law of what? Customary law. And what's the customary law? International law. And where does international law come from? Your own Moors treaties, your own ancient customs. That's where it comes from. So if we don't follow our own ancient customs, that makes us outlaws. We must understand, we can't enforce something until we're following the instructions and we're abiding by the law as well, because it's been sanctioned already, it's already been set forth. Okay, Moors, number 4.
Family in law, organized upon the basis of a fundamental law and existing for the recognition and protection of rights.
Alright, so it's organized, right? So you're organized, it's like organized juror society, because it's organized. Moors have to be organized. But what type of organized? We have to follow the norms of international law, we just can't make up our own rules. We can't jump to box number 2 and start maintaining interior domains until we check the box number 1. We can't make up our own rules, alright? Okay, Moors, continue.
The juror sphere is to be distinguished from the moral sphere, the latter denoting the whole scope or range of ethics or the science of conduct. The former embracing only such portions of the same as have been made the subject of legal sanction or recognition.
Okay, let's continue.
The term juror society is used as the synonym of state or organized political community.
Okay, so that's my point, the last sentence. So an organized juror society is what? The term juror society is used as a synonym of state. Of state. State. Juror society means state or organized political community. So when you see the word political, right? When you see the word political, it's another synonym to what? State. Okay, so let's pause right there. So now we know that juror means state. Now we go back. So nation is about the people, and the people is about the nation, but the people have to have an organized juror society, so it's organized what? State society. See? See, Blackfall Dictionary will give you the answers to the test. I don't know if Moors recall or not, in my previous classes, I'm talking about, going way back. I said the Blackfall Dictionary was what? It's, it's a book, it's an exorcism book. It's an exercise of an exorcism. What does exorcism mean? When you're performing an exorcism, what are you doing? You're reading some sentences, you're reading sentences. And those sentences either help people or they hurt people, right? It's adjudication. So an exorcism is doing what? Removing the negative law. We just read about positive law. An exorcism removes the negative law. What is negative law? It is the municipal law of the corporate states of the United States of America. When Moors start to form their organized juror society through their words, their sentences, through their constitution, then they begin to do what? Ratification, depository, promulgation. When you start using those words, what is that? That's an exorcism. You're using positive law, positive words of positive law, mother's law, to get what? Get rid of what? Patriarchy, patriarch law, that the cons have been using, right? Gotta understand this. So Moors have been studying the Blackfall Dictionary, 3rd and 4th edition, for decades. Have we been using positive law? No, we've been trying to enforce their what? Negative law, which is their statutes. You must understand this, Moors. We have to get up back on the positive side, right? We have to be appropriate persona, suit jurors of what? Positive law. And what is positive law? Your constitution. That's your ratification, depository and promulgation following the peremptory laws of international law. We must understand this. Now, watch this. The United Nations have been trying to get our attention, haven't they? Through all their declarations, watch this. Keep in mind, we just talked about nation, which is an organized juror society, right? Juror means what? State, right? That's what we're learning, right? So the term juror society means what? A synonym for what? State. And juror is a synonym for what? Political. So juror and political mean state. All these words mean the same thing, your political community is a state. Now, watch what the rights of indigenous people says, we, we, we've gone over this before. Article 5. Article 5. Indigenous people, Moors. Moors have the right to maintain and strengthen their distinct political. What do they tell you, first word? This document's been out since 2007, winning year 2022. Barack H. Obama, the President of the United States International Organization, signed it in 2010. It's been 12 years since Barack H. Obama signed it. Why did Barack H. Obama sign it? Because he understood statehood. He knew that the Moors needed to understand organized juror society and customary international law. So political means what? State. What does legal mean? That's your legislation. That's your integrity of domain. Then it's economic liberty without any inequality. See how they set up the triple principle, uh, triple principle right in front of your face? Moors have been reading this since 2010, 12 years. Not understanding that they're giving you the answers to the test. Then they go and say what? Social and cultural institutions while retaining their rights. The rights, obligations, that's juror, right? That's nation, there's your rights to participate fully if they so choose. Where's the word choose at? In your treaty. Treaty in Madrid, Article 15, they're trying to let you know, that's what you need to enforce, Moors. You have to return to Morocco and choose the entire submission to the laws of the empire. That's your obligation. I, we're talking obligation. Juror means what? State. You have an obligation to return to the state. What type of state? A Moors state government, that's the triple principle. That's what your treaty says. Then it goes on to continue, right? So they're saying, if you wanna participate fully, then you have to choose to do what? You have to choose political, economic, social and cultural life of the state. See, they give you the answer to the test? But let's continue. Matter of fact, let's move up to Article 4. Now, keep in mind, we're going over the Act Algeciras of 1906. But I'm trying to let the Moors see, they've been giving us a roadmap back to our own treaties. Article 4. Indigenous people, Moors. Moors, in exercising their right to self-determination, have the right to autonomy or self-government in matters relating to, so let's pause right there. So they're telling you answers to the test. Your self-determination do what? You have to determine in your head where you're gonna return to Morocco and enforce the treaties. Well, how do you do that? Okay, you need autonomy. How do you get autonomy? You have to now pledge your allegiance to a separate state. And that state has a separate jurisdiction away from any other state. And you have to return to a government. So the autonomy is for a government. You have to be a part of a government in order to have autonomy. Then it continues, right? Their internal. Slide right down. Their internal and local affairs, what is that? Their internal and local affairs. What is that? Did y'all just see the triple principle? I'm gonna keep reading, watch. Their internal and local affairs as well as ways and means for financing their autonomous function. Did you see the triple principle? Alright, let's scroll back up. The triple principle is everywhere, Moors. You have to start looking for it. You must use your discernment and start thinking like a Moor that's enforcing your self-government of the triple principle. Let's look for the triple principle. Moors, in exercising their right to self-determination, have the right to autonomy or self-government. What's that? That's the state. Off the top, they're telling you about autonomy of what? The state. That's sovereignty and independence. That's your first principle, right? Now they're about to go right into the second principle. Their internal and local affairs. What's that? In, what's that? Integrity domains. And what's last? As well as ways and means for financing their autonomous function, economic liberty without any inequality, triple principle. It's everywhere, Moors. You gotta see the signs and symbols. Now, once you get through reading article five, right, it now tells you to go back to your treaty in Madrid. Article fifteen to enforce paragraph one, to return to Morocco through an application, right? Once you now have fulfilled articles one through five, what happens in article six? Every Moor has a right to a nationality. Moors go straight to this article six. Man, we got a right to nationality. But wait. This is where we're getting it confused. Listen to me, Moors. We're talking about the Act of Augustus of nineteen oh six. Keep that in mind. Look at this, Moors. The Act of Augustus of nineteen oh six. The triple principle about sovereignty and independence, integrity of domains, and economic liberty without any inequality. It sets up what? The organized jewel society. And we check all those boxes because it's all about the organized state that creates the society. Then, after you're organized through the state, what sets up next? The state establishes your nationality. Yes, you're born with your consanguinity, but your consanguinity means nothing without what? An application that says who you are. It's all about your political status, Moors. Your political status, your political status. And how do you determine your political status? Well, show me your state documents. You got state ID? Where's your birth record that says where you were born? It's all about the documentation, the reforms, and the applications, the mechanisms makes the, creates the arrangement of your nationality. Listen. So the state establishes nationality. And from there, now you can consider yourself a Moors national or a Moroccan national. But what did Moors do? They jumped straight into nationality, called themselves Moors Americans. Which meant they did what? They're trying to enforce sovereignty and independence without state. Then it went right into written affidavits with integrity of domains, writing patently frivolous and arbitrary and capricious documents. Then we turn around, we want to lean, we want to lean everybody. Because we had pain and we were looking for some type of compensation for that pain. Everything we did, we did out of order. So, let me explain myself. Why do you think the United Nations put nationality number six? They're trying to give you instructions. If you don't check the first five articles and establish what? The state. Then you don't have nationality. Because the only way to have nationality, the state. The state is sovereign and the state extends sovereignty to you. I'm going to tell the Moors again, the word Moor is a generic word. The word Moor defines who you are, but it's about your political status. If you are Kendrick Johnson, then what type of Moor are you? Moroccan subject. If you're Kendrick Bay, that did not pledge his allegiance to a state, then you're what? A stateless Moor. That's your status. If you are a Moor that now is working for the United States International Organization, what type of Moor does that make you? Well, you're still Moroccan subject, but now you're a protege. We're talking about that today. The proteges work for the government. They are the protected persons that work for the government. They have what's called qualified immunity. We're talking about that. The word Moor is a generic word. We have to take our time and understand what is the triple principle all about? What is organized jewel society all about? It's trying to get Moors to return to Morocco through a what? Competent state that has competent authority. That way you now can have your nationality. Without the state, you are stateless. And if you're stateless, you have no nationality. Didn't the Congress try to tell you that? They told you that in nineteen oh six through the expatriation. Citizenship abroad, page four fifty-nine to four sixty, Mr. Root, they told you verbatim. Moors lost their nationality through the Naturalization Act, right? Of seventeen ninety and the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy, as well as the fourteenth amendment. You lost your nationality. Why? Because you could not claim that you came from a Moors state anymore. You became now. Your status was, you came under the sovereignty of the United States of America. So Moors have to get back to a state, okay? If you want your nationality. Just trying to give you these reference points. They're trying to tell us, Moors. This is why this is number six. You gotta do the first five first. Okay. Alright, so hopefully we learned something about just this one sentence. Declaration relative to the organization of the police. And what's the police about? What's the police job? To maintain order. You have to police yourself. It's Islam. I sell law and master. You have to police yourself first. You have to maintain what's called self-determination. And understand your human right is to return to Morocco through the state. Police yourself. That's chapter number one. Alright, article one. Article one, the conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to renounce. On the measures necessary to organize, the police declares that the following provision should be made. So what's happening? The Sultan does get what? The Sultan summoned, summoned. Do Moors know what summoned means? Summon means, that's a decree. That's an order. That's juror. They were sanctioned. You have to now make a special appearance. It's not an option. So the Sultan summoned all the parties that we read in this treaty thus far. When we first opened up, it read all the parties, right? He summoned them. They had no choice but to make a special appearance. Okay, article two. So what, what do we learn from article one immediately? Isn't the United States of America a party? They were summoned. What does that tell you? They're subordinate to this treaty. That they are the tenants in Morocco. You must understand they have a privileged status. What is their political status? It's called privileged. Why is it privileged? Because according to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six. Article twenty-five says what? Either one of the parties can petition to abandon the treaty with a twelve-month notice. That's what makes the United States of America privileged to be in Morocco. Because their existence is only good for twelve months at a time. That must be understood. That's why it's privileged. That's why the ICJ said that the United States and the United States of America can hold on to a limited jurisdiction, civil and criminal over Moors. Why? Because soon as Moors wake up. Moors can immediately start to do what? Enforce the treaties. It's not about terminating the treaties, Moors. I'll say it again. It's not about terminating the treaties, Moors. It's about what? What is the treaty about? Peace and friendship. That's your obligation. Your job is to reign in order, get back to peace and friendship. Not evictions. That's why the evictions clause of article twenty-five is last in the treaty. Your job is to get into what? Diplomatic relations. And consul relations and follow the instructions of international law. Diplomatic relations, that's Vienna Convention on Diplomatic Relations of the year nineteen sixty-one. That's the Vienna Convention on Council Relations nineteen sixty-three. Get back to enforcing international law. Don't worry about termination. Get back into trying to get the demonstration that you can now do what? Maintain an organized jewel society. Let's continue. Article two. We gotta break this down, Moors. We just can't race through this treaty. I'm gonna tell you right now, this treaty gives Moors a lot of power. It's a lot of power for you, Moors, in this treaty. That's why we have to take our time. We have to really understand what we're reading here. This is why the United States never wanted Moors to understand they were Moors. They had to tell you you were neither black and colored, and African American, and Moors American because you have way too much power with your pen. But when you know you have that much power, you should be the person that's now maintaining an organized jewel society and not being belligerent. Why do you need to be belligerent when you already control the outcome of anybody that's a tenant in your land? Get back to negotiations. Let's continue. Article two. The police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the Magzim from Moors Mohammedans, commanded by Moors kids. And distributed in the eight ports open to Congress. Now, as you can see, articles one and two are already setting up the power of Moors. One of the things I want to say as a side note, as we read it, every time it mentions the word Moors, you should make a little line. Four lines and then you cross through it, right? That's fine, right? So every time it mentions the word Moors, do a little mark. You're recognized about forty-three times they mention, okay? It's a lot of times. Okay, let's, let's break this down. Article two. The police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. Okay, there's no more Sultans, right? That means the Congress have already agreed to come under what? Moors states. Because the Sultan decided to become the king of what? A organic modern state. So now everybody comes under the sovereignty of Moors states. Listen. It shall be recruited by the Magzim for, from Moors Mohammedans, right? So, we already know Magzim means what? Government, right? So now, what's happening is the Moors are getting back into what? Sovereignty and reigning in the order of government. Okay, so let's look at the definition of Mohammed. So everybody understands Mohammed. Moors.
Mohammedan law, a system of native law prevailing among the Mohammedan, Mohammedans in India. And administered there by the British government.
Okay, so, eh, everyone already knows the Congress always write in code. They always try to distract and say, yeah, uh, Mohammed, eh, that's Egypt way over there. And the reality, law is law. Law controls the world. This is customary law of planet Earth. They're trying to distract you by giving you some geographical location, right? So Mohammedan law. A system of native law. What does that tell you? It's going back to the root. That's the indigenous people, rights indigenous people. Prevailing, so what? So native law, which is Moors law, prevails. Among the Mohammedans in India. So they say India, but you know, they named everybody India all over the world, right? Indians, they got your, you got your West Coast Indians, the East Coast Indians, they named everybody Indians, right? So it's just a generic word. Administered there by the British government. So what are they telling you? The British government was what? Administering what? A regime of capitulations in India. Right? And they were controlling the Moors. And utilizing their own system of laws. They wasn't using, utilizing the native law. They were using what? Negative law. Not positive law. You gotta understand what you're reading. Sometimes you gotta read backwards to understand the story of what's happening. You have to read backwards. So the British were controlling the Moors with negative law. But they're telling you Mohammedan law is ancient, is native, is indigenous, Aboriginal, iconocles, right? So. It shall be recruited by the Magzim from the Moors Mohammedans. So, you see the word Mohammed, we just said that's native law, right? That prevails. So the Moors law prevails. You see that? This is the treaty. Moors law prevails. Commanded by Moors kids. So what's a Moors kids? That's your courts. That's your government. They use a lot of Arabic words, okay? Because you have to remember, Moors. When this was written, there was a lot of dynasties that took place. They had a lot of different words. They say Mohammedan, they say Sharifian. These are different dynasties, okay? So they, they throw in a lot of different words. What's the most important word you should understand? Sovereignty and authority. So Moors have sovereignty and authority because our states are what? Sovereign. That's the triple principle, right? What else should you understand? It's all about the Moors government, Moors law, Mohammedans law, and it's about what? It's commanded by Moors kids. So this is all about Moors and Moors. That's article two. It's letting you know what? How did I preference this? I said, it's the, the treaty is immediately going to let you know who's in charge. The parties must be known. So the first two articles letting you know who has the authority. And it is Moors. What type of Moors? We're talking status, political status, Moors of a state. Moors that are what? Controlling the Moors government. Moors nationals, Moroccan nationals. Those are the Moors in control. Why am I underscoring that? Because you're gonna learn as we read, there are other classifications of Moors that we're gonna learn about here shortly. Remember I said that now. There's different classifications, meanings, political statuses, different political statuses of Moors. That's the read. That's why we've been going through this for fifty-something classes. I've been building Moors up to understand these different classifications of status. What type of status? Political status. Let's continue. Number three. In order to aid the Sultan in the organization of this police. Spanish officers and non-commissioned officers as instructors. And French officers and non-commissioned officers as instructors. Shall be placed at his disposal by their respective government. So what's happening? At this time in nineteen oh six, the Kingdom of Morocco, and at that time, it wasn't referred to as the Kingdom of Morocco, it was just the empire, right? Simply just empire, nineteen oh six. At this time, the Sultan had lost a lot of control. There's a lot of infighting going on, especially family fighting each other over control. So the empire was, was in a spiral. As well as all the Europeans were spiraling because they're fighting each other too over what? The spoils of war, right? They're all looking for a regime of capitulation over Moors. They're fighting over our resources. So everybody's fighting and the Sultan is losing control as well. So they're trying to rein in the order on both sides. What both sides? Sides of the Sultan and dealing with the foreigners, right? So what's happening here in article three? The Sultan said, okay, I'm gonna let France, Spain, et cetera, bring in some instructors to help us become organized again. So it's like if you own a company, you hire some other company, bring them in and say, hey, man, help me with this logistics, right? Help me with supply chain, uh, uh, help me with process improvement, right? Sultan is bringing in a team to help get the Moors back into an organized jewel society, okay? So that team of foreigners coming into Morocco have a charge, charged affairs to help Moors become organized again. But the Moors still have what? Control. They can command even these instructors, right? That's why they set forth to let you know who's in charge of the instructors, instructors is still the Moors. Listen. So, which shall submit their designation to the approval of His Sharifian Majesty. So what, what is, what are they trying to get approval of? For those particular instructors to be instructors, okay? A contract drawn between the Magzim and these instructors and conforming to the regulations provided by article four. So they get into a contract, you guys are going to help us, help Moors get back into a more organized jewel society, okay? Let's move on. They shall determine, the contract shall determine the conditions of their engagement and fix their pay. Which must not be less than double of the pay corresponding to the rank of each officer or non-commissioned officer. In addition, they will be allowed living expenses varying according to their residence. Proper lodging will be placed at their disposal by the Magzim, which will likewise supply them with their horses. And the necessary farce. So remember, it's written in nineteen oh six. Uh, if you go to the Kingdom of Morocco right now, there's certain areas in the Kingdom of Morocco, you still can't drive a car up and down those streets. Everything is either on foot. Everything is either on foot or camel, horse, et cetera, okay, that must be understood. All right, so, continue to read. The governments having jurisdiction over the instructors, reserve the right to recall them and replace them by others. Accepted and engaged under the same conditions, so Moors got a lot of power, we can fire those instructors even back in nineteen oh six. What is this about? Don't focus on the fact about the instructors, what should you focus it on? The power Moors have, the authority that we have. Our laws prevail, we are the sovereign. What makes us sovereign is Moors, the state, the state is sovereign. All right? Article four. These officers and non-commissioned officers for a period of five years to date from the ratification of the Act of the Conference, shall give their services to organizations of a body of Sharifian police. So the Sharifian police are what? They're what? Organized, they're trying to become organized. That's what Moors have to do, we have to organize properly utilizing customary law. All right, let's continue. They shall assure instructions and discipline in conformity with the regulations to be drawn up and respect thereto. They shall also see that the men enlisted are fit for military service. In a general way, they shall, they shall supervise the administration of the soldiers and superintended the payment of their salary, which shall be affected by the admin, assisted by the county officer instructor. They shall extend to the Moorish authorities, invested with the command of these bodies, their technical aid in the exercise of the said command. You see that, Moors? Moors are exercising their sovereign authority in Morocco. And this is, this is chapter one. They know all about who's in charge, Moors. This is a contract, Moors. Who's in charge? Moors. What type of Moors? What's the political status of a state? What type of Moors? Moors are authorized government officials of the state. They have what's called full powers. Right, they have the credentials, the emanating document from their state. We have to be organized, Moors. Let's continue. The regulations to assure, recruit, recruits?
Recruit.
Recruited, discipline, instruction, and administration of the bodies of the police shall be established by the mutual agreement between the Sharifian Minister of War or his delegate. The inspector provided by article seven and the highest ranking French and Spanish instructors, okay? So just pause there real quick. So the regulations to assure their recruit, recruit, discipline, instruction, and administration of the bodies of the police shall be established by mutual agreement between the Sharifian Minister of War or his delegate. So what's happening? Who's a Sharifian Minister of War? That's the Moors. Right, this is another title. Sharifian Minister of War, what's that? Basically, Secretary of Defense, right? Let's continue. The regulations shall be submitted to the diplomatic body at Tangier, which will formulate its opinion within a month's time. After that period, the regulations shall be enforced. The total strength of the police shall not be more than twenty-five hundred men or nor less than two thousand, which shall be distributed according to the importance of the ports and groups varying between a hundred fifty and six hundred men. The number of Spanish and French officers shall be between sixteen and twenty, of Spanish and French non-commissioned officers between thirty and forty. What are they setting up? They're now setting up a perimeter, right? Because you're dealing with customs. They're collecting money, they're putting now Moors in position to now oversee commerce of these ports, okay? That's what's happening right now, they're setting up organized Jewish society to deal with commerce, okay? And number six, the funds necessary to maintain and pay soldiers and officers and non-commissioned officers, instructors shall be advanced by the state bank to Sharifian treasury within the limits of the annual budget assigned to the police, which shall not exceed two million and a half pesetas, pesetas is, is Spanish coin, for an effective strength of two thousand one hundred men, okay? All right, so let's go ahead and pick up now article seven.
During the same period of five years, a general inspection shall be made into the working of the police. Such inspection shall be entrusted by His Sharifian Majesty to a superior officer of the Swiss Army, who will be submitted to his approval by the Swiss, Swiss federal government. This officer will be styled Inspector General and reside at Tangier. He shall inspect at least once a year the different bodies of the police, and after such an inspection, he shall draw up a, up a report which he will address to the Mahzin. In addition to such regular reports, he will, if he regards it as necessary, draw up special reports with reference to the working of the police. Without directly intervening either in the command or the instruction, the Inspector General will ascertain the results obtained by the Sharifian police as regards the maintenance of order and security in the places where this police shall have been established. Article eight, a copy of the reports and communications made to the Mahzin by the Inspector General with reference to his mission shall at the same time be transmitted to the Dean of the Diplomatic Body at Tangier in order that the diplomatic body be enabled to satisfy itself that the Sharifian police acts in conformity to the decisions taken by the conference and to see whether it guarantees effectively and in conformity with the treaties, the security of person and property of foreign citizens, subjects, and proteges, as well as that of commercial transactions. Article nine, in the case of complaints filed with the diplomatic body by the legation concerned, the diplomatic body may, upon notice given to the representative of the Sultan, direct the Inspector General to investigate and report for all available purposes in the matter of such complaints. Article ten, the Inspector General shall receive an annual salary of twenty-five thousand francs. In addition, he will be allowed six thousand francs for the expenses of his tours. The Mahzin will place at his disposal a suitable residence and will look after the maintenance of his forces. Article eleven, the material conditions of his engagement and of his establishment as provided by article, article ten shall be the subject of a contract drawn up between him and the Mahzin. A copy of his, this contract shall be communicated to the diplomatic body. Article twelve, the staff of instructors of the Sharifian police, officers, and non-commissioned officers shall be Spanish at Tetouan, mixed at Tangier, Spanish at La Rache, La Rache, French at Rabat, mixed at Casablanca, and French in the other three ports.
All right. So, that is the end of the reading of chapter one. We're gonna go back and now review some parties. Most Moors will read over it and don't really think too much about the fact, they disclosed some parties that you need to be familiar with. This is ADPAC study session. Article eight starts to tell you about some parties, right? So article eight, a copy of the reports and communications made to the Mahzin by the Inspector General with reference to his mission shall at the same time be transmitted to the Dean of the Diplomatic Body at Tangier in order that the diplomatic body be able to satisfy itself that the Sharifian police acts in conformity to the decisions taken by the conference and to see whether it guarantees effectively and in conformity with the treaties, the security of person and property of foreign citizens, subjects, and proteges, as well as that of commercial transactions. So what's happening? This is one of the clauses that the International Court of Justice was reading as it relates to Moors. Okay? When ADPAC talked about Moors being proteges, obviously, as Moors know, ADPAC didn't make that word up. Where do we see the word? Initially, we're studying that from the ICJ, okay? Let's go back over to the ICJ. All right? Now, Moors should be familiar with this, this is the summary page of the International Court of Justice, case concerning France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two. This is the summary page, right? We're, we should be very familiar with this by now. This is sections two and three. So section two says what? That the judges ruled what? What was their adjudication? They said that with regard to consul jurisdiction in the French zone of Morocco, the United States is entitled to exercise such jurisdiction in accordance with the terms of its treaty with Morocco of September sixteen eighteen thirty-six. That is to say, in all disputes, civil and criminal, between citizens or proteges of the United States. So the United States was given what? Jurisdiction over its citizens and proteges. Because your treaty said that of eighteen thirty-six, articles twenty, twenty-one, that someone has to be the consul court, and since Moors were stateless and didn't have Moorish state governments, by default, the United States was able to maintain the jurisdiction under what they call regime of capitulations, but listen. Section three. The court came out and said what? It is also entitled to exercise consul jurisdiction in all cases, civil or criminal, brought against citizens or proteges, or proteges, Moors. We're gonna learn about proteges a little bit more in a moment. Of the United States, to the extent, to the extent, required by provisions of the Act of Al-Saraas relating to consul jurisdiction. Right, okay, so we go back to the treaty. This is just one of the provisions that the ICJ was looking at, so the ICJ looked at article eight. Said what? A copy of the reports and communications made to the Mahzin by the Inspector General with reference to his mission shall at the same time be transmitted to the Dean of Diplomatic Body at Tangier in order that the diplomatic body be enabled to satisfy itself that the Sharifian police acts in conformity to the decisions taken by the conference and to see whether it guarantees effectively and in conformity with the treaties, the security of person and property of foreign citizens, subjects, and proteges. That's where we have to stop. So what's happening? The ICJ is looking at this saying, Moors don't have a state, which means Moors aren't overseeing their own sovereignty and independence, which means they can't maintain interior domains, which means what? We fail on the regime of capitulation, we could not enforce our own Moroccan law. So the treaty said there must be someone overseeing the conformity of treaties. So by default, the United States got to do what? Maintain the conformity of the treaty and have a jurisdiction, both civil and criminal jurisdiction over Moors. And how are they able to maintain it? Utilizing our own Moorish treaties against us. Why? Because Moors are still suffering from what? Cognitive dissonance. And Moors had failed to enforce their own treaty provisions to return to Morocco. So the ICJ had to now have a ruling in favor of the United States and gave them a limited civil and criminal jurisdiction over who? Well, it's gonna tell you the parties, let's get into these parties, shall we? Who are the parties? Foreign citizens, in this example, too. United States of America and the United States International Organization, listen. Subjects and proteges, those are the parties. But wait a minute. You see how they got subjects and proteges? Why they got subjects and proteges? Because this is simple, foreign citizens, we, we, we know what that is, right? It's simple, right? Why they making a distinction between subjects and proteges? Why are they making that distinction? Let's go back to the summary page. So the summary page made a distinction, right? Watch what the summary page does. This is how Moors have to study, we have no choice, we're talking about treaties right now, Moors, treaties! Supreme law of the land, listen. So the ICJ distinguished between who? Citizens and proteges, they never said the word Moroccan subject. Now I'm here to say what? Citizens and proteges, they never made the distinction of Moroccan subject. But yet, the treaty talks about subjects and proteges, right? Let's talk about these political statuses, like I told you, the word Moor is a generic word. It's defined by what? Your political status, let's learn about that. Okay. Now we have to go to your Moorish treaty, known as what? Treaty Madrid of eighteen eighty. Protections where? In Morocco, not at Morocco, in Morocco, it is about what? Proteges, protections, proteges. But who are they specifically protecting? Now we have to understand article two of the treaty. This is a Moorish treaty, supreme law of the land, you go down to article two, all right? We have to make these distinctions, Moors, they're talking, we're talking about our old Moorish treaties at this time. The Act of Al-Saraas of nineteen oh six is making distinctions about some parties right now, right? As it relates to article eight. All right, let's go down now to article two. Article two. Hey, mother, article two.
Foreign representatives at the head of a legation may select their interpreters and employees from among the subjects of Morocco or others. These protected persons shall be subject to no duty, impost, or tax, whatever, other than those stipulated in articles twelve and thirteen.
All right. So what is article two about? It's now defining that the, what's called the foreign country has what they call the protected parties of their foreign country, so listen. Article two, foreign represent, representatives at the head of legation may select their interpreters and employees from among the subjects of Morocco. So proteges are who? Interpreters and employees of who? The foreign states, United States of America as example. United States of America got to choose from subjects of Morocco, they got to choose who? Employees, interpreters, et cetera. So proteges have a political status that they're basically working for the government of the United States or the United States of America. Those are the proteges. But the proteges are still what? Moroccan subjects, because everybody's a Moroccan subject, but the protege means you just have a higher what? Political status as a what? Diplomat, someone that works for the government, right? You have a higher status, you're still a Moroccan subject. But now you have official title of a government. Now you come under what's called qualified immunity. You have qualified immunity as a protected Moroccan subject in their government. Okay, who are proteges? Let's identify the parties, we're talking parties, this is a contract, the parties must be known, let's talk about it. Who are proteges? Okay. Listen. Who are proteges? Well, first, what was that first political status? A protege is what? A Moroccan subject. That's chosen as what? An employee of what? The foreign state. So the honorable Obamas were what? Moroccan subjects. They were chosen as what? Proteges. The proteges are what? Employees of the foreign state. But their first political status is Moroccan subject. The second political status is protege. They are the protected persons because they have qualified immunity to work for the government all around the world. Listen. So, I have a few pictures up here, right? These are Moors, we must respect them. They're honorable Moors, why do I say they're honorable Moors? Because they have been trying to do everything they can, understand exactly who Moors are, to slowly but surely try to get the Moors back into a sovereign status. Barack H. Obama signed what? Rights indigenous people. Keep in mind, George Bush in two thousand seven refused to sign the rights indigenous people. Barack H. Obama comes into office, he signs it in twenty-ten. Barack H. Obama comes into office, he signs in twenty-ten. But did they ratify and deposit and propagate it? No. So Barack H. Obama signs it on an international level as what? The United States of America. Then it was supposed to be brought back to the United States International Organization and their legislative branch and their judicial branch, more specifically the judicial branch, the senators, are supposed to sign a bill to make it legislation and then send it to Barack H. Obama so he can sign it in too long. They never did that. Barack H. Obama still did his best to let the Moors know, hey man, y'all need to pay attention to what I just did. Y'all watching me on TV every day. Did you see me signing Rights of Indigenous People? You need to go and look into it. Because you already know that the Senate and the House of Representatives is not going to ratify it. So what's happening? These are honorable Moors. Once they're, the word Moors is a generic word. So what's their first political status? Moroccan subject. What's their second political status? Protege. Because they worked for the foreign state. Right? Listen. These are Moors, all with political statuses. Moroccan subjects. But they're proteges. Why? They're employees of the conquering state. Listen. Moroccan subjects. Their political status. But what's the next status they got? Proteges. Right? According to your treaties, listen. Moroccan subjects. Rich port. Rich port. Puerto Rico. Rich port. Puerto Rico. Moroccan subject. But the political status is what? Protege, protected person on a list with what? Qualified immunities in international law. These are just some familiar faces, right? This is what Moors have to understand. The word Moore is a generic word. You must understand the political status. These are Moors. What type of Moors? Moroccan subjects. What's their political status? Protege. Because they work as employees for who? The United States. Are they stateless? No. You know why? Because they're operating in what? The Moroccan subject straw man name. It's the name that's on the registrar that makes their application, their status on the record. What they got? Birth certificate, driver's license, all type of registration. And on top of that, all them take what? An open allegiance to hold those offices. By their what? Their own choice, their choosing not to return to Morocco. We must understand, we have to underscore this. We have to talk about, we're talking about the Act Al-Dosaras nineteen oh six, Chapter one, Article eight. It's now setting forth, who are the parties? The parties must be known. These are all honorable Moors. You must understand, every last one of them know about the Moors. Every last one of them that I've showed you these images. Every last one of them know about the Moors. They're receiving documents every day. Not once a week, every day for Moors. That must be understood. We're talking about stats. These are all honorable Moors. Have they, they're suffering from what? It's called acquiescence. Remember we read in the ICJ, right? International Court of Justice, France versus United States of America nineteen fifty-two. What did the court say? That the Moroccan government and the Moors acquiesce. What does acquiesce mean? That we agree by not saying what? Rejection. How else did we agree? Okay, let's go to it. Let's go to the reference point. We have to talk treaties, Moors. Treaty Supreme Law of the Land, right? Let's stick with the Supreme Law of the Land. You know, if we're not talking about the Constitution of the United States of America, no, if we're not talking about the Constitution of the United States International Organization, we're talking about your Moors treaties. Why? Because treaty Supreme Law of the Land. Article fifteen, Treaty Madrid. These are the instructions. These are your rights. And these are the obligations for all Moors regardless of their political status. Any subject of Morocco. Any, any, any subject of Morocco. Article two talked about what? Subjects of Morocco. That the United States is picking employees out of those subjects of Morocco. So any, any, any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized. All those images I show you are all naturalized too. Moroccan subjects. And they're naturalized where? In a foreign country. Okay, let's go back to your treaty nineteen oh six. We're breaking this down. Act Al-Dosaras nineteen oh six, Article eight. What did it say about the foreign, it said about the citizen? The citizens are foreigners. Who are the foreigners? The Americans. Who are the foreigners? The citizens of the United States International Organization. Are the foreigners claiming to be in the United States of America. So you're in a foreign country as a Moroccan subject. But you're still where? In Morocco. Your cognitive dissonance. What does cognitive dissonance mean? You can't separate something that's fake from reality. Any, any, any subject of Morocco that's an employee of the United States that's a protege that has been naturalized in a foreign country who shall return to Morocco shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been readily necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. So what's happening? All those images I show you, all of them have to do what? Get permission to remain naturalized in the United States as proteges. Or the next of what? Outlaws. And I say that respectfully. Because they're still honorable Moors, but they suffer from what? Cognitive dissonance. And they acquiesce according to the International Court of Justice. So what's happening with paragraph two? So foreign naturalization heretofore. So after the signing of this treaty, your naturalization as a naturalized citizen is acquired by subjects of Morocco and proteges according to the rules established by the United States of America shall be continued to the United States of America as regards all its effects without any restrictions. So all those images I show you, the United States has both civil and criminal jurisdiction over them. And they acquiesce to it. So therefore, the Moors had an obligation to be in conformity with the treaties. That was our obligation to maintain the triple principle. That was our obligation to have an organized dual society. In order to deal with what? The security of persons. To deal with what? The security of persons. What sets up the security of persons and property treaties? And whose job was it to oversee the treaties? Moors. So oversee what? Foreign citizens. Citizens in the United States of America. And subjects and proteges. So, listen. So competent Moors state governments have jurisdiction and authority over who? Foreign citizens, their subjects, and their proteges. That must be understood. Because we have sovereign authority. What has sovereign authority? Our state. And the competent authority of the state with their emanating documents called their governmental credentials. Don't ever let the United States fool you to think that they have some equal standing in law with you as it relates to the treaty. Yes, they're equal. But what does that mean, they're equal? Meaning you can't be belligerent towards them. It's no different than you being a landlord over rental property. You have a tenant living in your rental property. You just can't walk to the house with your key and just open the door anytime you want. You have to respect what? Their sovereignty and independence of that rental agreement. Just can't walk in their house whenever you want. Just can't walk onto the property whenever you want. You must set up what? An application arrangement mechanism. Hey, send them notice. I'll be buying the property two days from now, from twelve to two. Once you do that, you have every right now to enter what? The property because you give them proper notice. It's called applications, the reforms. So yes, they are tenants in Morocco and we must respect them as our tenants and they must respect us as what? The landlords. Who's the landlord? The state! Not you Moors as individuals. The state is the landlord. And what are we? We're nothing but humble public servants of the state enforcing well-settled principles of international law, which is called your Moors treaties and you must conform to them as well. So what I'm going to do, Moors, I'm going to end it with that, right? I'm going to pause here. We're going to get back to studying in Class Fifty-Five. As you can see, we're taking our time. As far as I know of, I haven't seen any other Moors really going through the Act Al-Dosaras point by point. So we need to take our time. This is one of the most powerful treaties ever written on behalf of who? Moors. So therefore, if it's written for Moors to do what? Maintain authority. Then we must also understand, what is our obligations to our tenant? Because our tenant has a right to enforce this as well upon us. Just like any tenant can enforce a lease agreement upon their landlord. So if we don't know what the hell the damn provisions talk about, how can we enforce it? So we're going to take our time about this Act Al-Dosaras of nineteen oh six that talks about the parties. Now you understand why NPAC was building up about all these parties. The parties must be known, alright? I end with that. It's mine.